We want to welcome everybody to the July 9, 2003 meeting of the Palm Springs Planning Commission. And we'll start with the report on the posting of the agenda.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. The agenda was posted last Thursday in accordance with state and local procedures.
Next item is the approval of the minutes of the May 28, 2003 meeting.
Chairman, I move approval.
Is there a second? So we'll have abstaining from this will be Mr. Wright and Mr. Hockenadl, who did not attend that meeting and who are new commissioners and we'll welcome them in a moment. So those voting on the minutes will be the rest of us. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous approval of the minutes. And I want to welcome to our commission our new members Larry Hockenadl on the end and Ricky Wright. Welcome to you. We're glad to have you. And we'll look forward to serving with you for the next three years.
It should be a pleasure.
Next on the agenda is public comments. And any anyone here wishing to make any comments to the commission should do so at this time. If you are here to speak on a matter that's on our agenda, we would prefer that you wait to make your comments until that time, but if you would prefer to do it now, you're welcome to do so. And there's a three-minute time limit. Anybody here want to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll pass to our next item, which is the election of new officers. And the officers to be elected are a chairman and a vice chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that Commissioner Schoenberger be nominated as chairperson and Commissioner Morantz be nominated as vice chairperson.
I'll second. Any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor.
You guys can vote.
Diane Morantz and I will abstain, but all others in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes? Our public hearing items are called at 2:00. And we've got some time, so we'll move down the agenda to architectural approval matter. Item number seven on the agenda, case 5.0942. Application by City of Palm Springs for architectural approval of the new Palm Springs Visitor Center located at 2901 North Palm Canyon Drive, UR Zone, Section 3. A staff report?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and congratulations. This is a city-sponsored project. We've provided the commission an update during a study session. You've had a chance to talk to the architect in that study session. This is a project that's had as much community input as you can have for a fairly simple, straightforward community facility. This is the tramway gas station, soon to be the Palm Springs Visitor Center. The project objectives were quite simple. Move the visitor's center operation into the building with the least amount of impact on the existing building and create a parking facility that would accommodate the needs of the visitor's center and get it done quick because we have to be in there sooner than we'd like to talk about. So this this set of plans has been worn out already this week. The plans were looked at and supported by Design Review on Monday, the Historic Site Preservation Board yesterday morning, and before the Planning Commission today. And if the Planning Commission endorses the plans, they will go to council tonight for approval of plans and specifications, which is the step right before we go to bid on the project. So it's a project that had an awful lot of input at the front end and obviously a lot of community sensitivity because of the unique building that the architect has been asked to work with. Very quickly, go through it, North Palm Canyon Drive, tramway here, and existing driveway is roughly in this location, widening that driveway out so as you come off the bend here, you can pull in this way. This would be bus or RV parking, so it's real convenient for the buses to come in and queue so that they can leave fairly quickly and efficiently. And then we have a parking lot in this particular location for the traditional vehicles. I'll come back and talk about the parking lot in a moment. The existing building is this footprint. The existing building does not have sufficient walkways all the way around it, so they're adding a walkway around it for ADA access. Currently, if you open that door, the walkway ends and you'd have to step off the walkway and around. So basically taking the same shape and form and the same concrete scoring pattern from the existing right into the new so that you can see it because it's a different material at a different age, but it has the same effect on the ground plane. In the future, a new planter with some screen shrubs in here. I'll come back and talk about the detail of the landscape plan. Probably the most talked about part of the project from a design standpoint is the wall. The wall currently is six, seven feet tall on top of a little retaining wall, and the proposal at this point is to drop that wall down to 30 inches. And the debate back and forth has been remove it completely, lower it, if you lower it, how much? And the general feeling and consensus is because this becomes a public space with people and kids and maybe even a pet occasionally breaking free, that really having that barrier, even though it's not a real tall one, defines the space and at least somebody has to make an effort to go out and over it or to climb in it. That was debated at Design Review. There's a little sentiment to raise it and keep it maybe four feet high so it's a little safer, but the consensus was 30 inches would work. The building is actually probably 18 inches above the average grade adjacent to the street, so you'll probably see most of the building, if not all of it, from a distance. And as you get closer, that little screen wall from a car might screen some of the very lower portions of the building. The landscaping around here is a very simple desert spoon form, one plant all the way around. It's a little bit stiff and spiky, and the idea is to just have a real strong statement of a simple material so that as you look at this, you really look at the building and you don't really call attention to the landscape. The landscape budget out front is basically pretty simple. Decomposed granite in most of these areas with some berming so that you'd have a little bit of an amphitheater-type feeling as you come out here. And then this is a quartz that's got a blue-green tint to it, two- to three-inch rock. I didn't bring the samples of the rock, but it's really got a neat color to it, and it was looked at at Design Review. Back of the property was intended to be just earth. It's pretty well been scraped off by the wind. In a plan check comment, I suggested that they look at a soil stabilizer or decomposed granite in this area on the basis that the wind pattern, any amount of dust that's out there that comes off the existing is just going to go in the doors when the employees open up the back doors. The landscape budget has been probably one of the things that probably has been cut back. We've got a fixed budget, and the task was to bring the project in budget, not just keep adding dollars because we could. So over time, I would suspect the city will come back in and reevaluate the landscape and augment it. The idea here is to come back in with a desert devil's shoestring plant just in a mass in these areas, and it's like a fountain grass type, real lacy small grass, and it only grows about that tall just to give a little field and again to downplay anything but really what you see is the building. New restroom facility, probably the only real significant change to the site, basically a prefabricated metal building in this location with the idea of just take the customers right by where they're going to go first, guaranteed, and then right into the visitor's center in these locations. And this is intended to be hidden to a large degree, almost invisible restroom facility, and I'll show you the plans on it in a moment. One of the things that's been of concern to everybody is if you enter the building or look through the building, will you be able to see the mountains on the other side? And even though it's not really the area of domain for the Planning Commission, the upper drawing, basically there'll be a five-foot partition, and then basically the windows go all the way up to the ceiling. So from inside the building or on the other side, you're going to pretty much look all the way through, and you just won't have to look at the desk right behind that five-foot partition. We have some colored perspective drawings of the restroom facility that didn't make it to the building unless they're hidden way on the end, so you can really get a feel for what the restrooms look like. If the architect has them, they can encourage Lance or Anna to just go ahead and bring them up. But basically, the restroom building is behind a frosted glass wall. So this is what you would see from tramway, looking back to the north. You'd see a frosted glass wall in this area with metal letters, Palm Springs Visitor Center. And with the idea of just creating that real nice faint screen, and then behind it, you would have a metal building that would have two canopies, one longways on the property, the other one kind of shortways, and they basically would be a taller one in this area and a lower one to provide some relief back and forth. You know, very simple building. It would not have mechanical air conditioning in it in Phase 1, and that would be something that would come back. And the metal sign would be a relatively small-scale sign on this area just to signify when you enter the building. It's not intended to be the main building ID sign. There was some question about whether or not this should match the font on the proposed entry monument signs that we've looked at on North Palm Canyon, just northwest of this site. This isn't the exact lettering, and we did discuss that with HSBB. Design Review didn't see it as a problem to have a different lettering because you're not going to see them together. But this would be a metal sign applied and mounted to the frosted glass. And the lighting on this was reviewed by Design Review, and basically it was intended to have an uplight in here to light this element, and then downlights along the front of the glass, and then an uplight. And at Design Review, we recommended you take the uplight out. It was felt that there's probably going to be plenty of light without that third light in that area. It's a fairly dark area, and to just overlight it would be, you know, an equally bad design issue as well as if you were to underlight it, and the balance was just take that one series of lights out. Again, Design Review recommended approval. We've got some minor conditions on your motions agenda for your consideration. I told you I was going to talk to you about the parking lot. Very quickly, before I put this one back, you can see the actual building sets in here for the restroom. This is a canopy, a high canopy, and this is a lower canopy, so you can kind of see how that roof element works relative to the building to just give it some character, but again, try to make it as invisible as possible. With regards to the parking lot, the city's been working with the Nichols family on the use of this property so that we don't have to try and put all the parking on site, and we're very close to an agreement on the terms for using that property. They've been very generous as a family. Because it's an interim parking facility, both at the city's desire as well as the Nichols' desire, when this overall area develops, this parking lot probably comes out. So that's one of the reasons why it's basically going to be a minimum improvement parking lot, as well as it's a budget constraint. But basically, it would be an asphalt parking lot. These islands would be painted. Currently, the proposal is to paint that island and just leave that. We've recommended in our plan check comments that this be cut out and that they just leave some boulders in it so that you have an element right there. This area would only be treated with boulders and kind of cleaned up, wouldn't be landscaped in this phase. The existing four lights that run along here will be really brought in to primarily take care of pedestrian lighting, and we recommend, and the motions agenda and Design Review recommended, that the city look at doing a full parking lot lighting program in the future, recognizing that it's not in the budget at this time. Mr. Chairman, I think that completes my overview. The project architects are in the audience. Alan Smoot, the project manager for the city, is in the audience. I will certainly try to answer any of your questions. And again, we recommend approval subject to those conditions in the motions agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Back to the commission with questions. Ms. Morantz?
I was going to ask Doug, but I'll wait. Doug, I drove by the area today, and if the wall in the front is kept at the height that it is or even lowered a little bit, were there any thoughts of putting any signage on that wall, backlit or anything like that?
One of the things that we know has to be done is a better signing program. If we have the visitor's center with just this sign, only the people coming down from the tram will see it, if they can see it at all. So we don't have a sign in this contract, so we're going to have to come back and do it. We just felt at this time that, one, it wasn't in the budget, and, two, we needed to really focus on getting that building interior in order.
I understand that.
Yeah.
Okay. But also, there is number three on the motions agenda, which talks about the vending machines. I would assume those vending machines are in a locked area?
At this point, no.
Okay.
They will in the future, I would guess.
It probably will end up being, okay. And thirdly, I don't know about any of my fellow commissioners, but I have a little trouble with that landscaping in the front. To me, it looks like it needs to be tended to, and it just kind of hides the charm of that building.
Well, the existing landscape all comes out, and the...
Things in front of the wall?
Everything that's there all comes out, and we're basically going to put a very pedestrian scale. It's a yucca-type plant.
Okay.
So it's going to be very sparse. The idea is, you know, in design, theory of that is to put something in that, one, discourages people from going over the wall, and, two, is just a sculptural element in front of a wall that's non-complicated.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Better than that grass, huh?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Grinns?
Yes, I had a design review, and it was met with favorably. I've got to compliment Anna and Lance for a good job, tight timeframe and a real tight budget. One concern that I've got, just so that we document it, is the glass wall that identifies the restroom is suggested to be plate glass, and I've just got a concern for a couple of reasons. One, it's very susceptible for graffiti because any rock can pick it up and scratch it, and then also the possible liability because it is plate, and it'll just shred rather than break up or crumble. Just possible options might be a hammered wire glass or something like that that's frosted so that it covers a couple of things, so just consideration for the budget if that goes into a change order.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Ms. Conrad?
I think that the 30 inches for the wall is much better than any higher height. And I wonder about the security for the bathroom. Are there sliding gates, or is that just going to be open all the time and open to the...
The bathroom's actually outdoors. So it's a self-contained bathroom facility that would be locked up at night.
But you're going to let people walk on the grounds at night?
Yeah.
Like, you're not going to have some sort of sliding mechanism or a gate that blocks people from walking around the building at night?
Personally, I don't think if there's any lighting at all, we're going to be able to keep some people from wanting to look at this building at night, you know? So the issue is, I think they're going to be there, but I don't, if the design team talked about walls and fences...
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Can you state your name and your address and sign in when you're done speaking, please?
Certainly. I'm Lance O'Donnell, one of the architects working on this project, and we have an office here in Palm Springs. I also reside here in Palm Springs. The issue of security within the project is it's ongoing, and we're taking advice as this thing moves along through the review channels. With the wall coming down from seven feet to, just want to clarify a few things, to 36 inches from the interior grade, there is the possibility of people jumping over it. That's just, there's no way to keep people out unless we kept the wall up at the height. So even putting a sliding gate at the entry at the end of the walkway presents problems because we could put that gate in at five or six feet, but if they go one or two feet to their right, there is only a 36-inch wall for them to step over. So security is an ongoing concern for us. There is a possibility of additional screening and additional doors to stop anybody from even going into the little vestibule area on the toilet room building, but as of now, it's just not in the budget for us to include that item. But if it becomes something that is necessary, is deemed necessary by this commission, and we can find funding for it, we will certainly include it.
Then I have one more question. What is the plan, and maybe it's best directed at Lance, what is the plan for the, there are stone walls there that are engraved with writing about how it originally got restored, and what's the plan for that? Is it going to be left? Are those going to be taken down? And, I mean, it's in the spot, right? You're using the same entrance, so...
Generally, we're using the same entrance location. The items that were just being spoke of are a offset pivot gate that has inscriptions on it that talks about some of Albert Frey's original design intent, as well as the transformation into a gallery space. That, as of now, was, it's our intention to find a home for it on site and to have it be a part of the ongoing history of the project and the project site. So that, as well as the large spheres that are out front that were left over from the earlier gallery are also going to be located on site. It's just site features for one to explore and visit.
Okay. Well, that's a good answer.
How about Mr. Grinns's question about the plate glass?
Yeah. Plate is just the wrong word for that glass. It's tempered. And tempered glass, when struck by rock, we're told by the glazing manufacturers that we've worked with, that large-size rocks up to six inches will just bounce off of it because tempered glass is very strong, very durable. If it is shot by something ballistic, a gun or something else, it will shatter, and it'll shatter just much like a car's windshield. Car's windshield is safety glass. It tends to shatter and stick together. This safety, this tempered glass will shatter into small little shards that are about the best one can hope for.
Any other questions about any Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I just got a couple of comments, and then I'm prepared to make them...
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell.
I just want to as well compliment the architecture. I think you've done a great job in preserving what's there and then adding to it in sort of the Albert Frey style. Whenever this happens, I have mixed emotions when the city, although I appreciate their budget consciousness, I'm somewhat amused when they, when we reduce our landscaping and don't complete our parking lighting, which we would never allow any other applicant to do, and because we have a fixed budget, we just wouldn't tolerate that elsewhere. Had this been any other applicant but the city, we'd tell them to complete a more aggressive landscaping plan and to complete their lot lighting if they wanted to complete their building. But we are the people, and it is our project, so we can break the rules. So with that, I would move case 5.0942, approving subject to the conditions in the staff report with the following changes. One, remove the lower uplight in the glass wall panel. Two, the night lighting should be added to the parking lot. And, three, the vending machines shall not be illuminated and have minimal advertising due to the location.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Yes, Mr. Evans?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. The landscape plan actually on this project probably triples the amount of landscaping that was approved on the gallery because we allowed them to phase it because of the cost. We did ask them to do a little better job on the parking lot than we're doing. Council will know about those concerns. I'll raise them, you know, and hopefully we'll get this in the budget process for next year.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. We'll turn now to our public hearing. Actually, we have two of them. The first one is item number four. Case...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Because of, I'll just double-check the audience. If we could encourage the chairman to go to item five first? Those people are in the audience, and I know we have some homeowners also here.
Okay. We'll pass down to item number five. This is case 5.0958-PD-78. Application by World Development for an amendment to PD 78 and major architectural approval for the construction of 43 condominium units to complete Phase 1 of the Canyon Heights Condominium Project located at 2901 South Palm Canyon Drive, PD-78, Zone R2, Section 34. And I have a conflict on that matter, so I will turn, my office represents an interested party, and so I will turn that matter over to Ms. Morantz, and excuse myself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff report, please.
Thank you very much. Kathy Marks will give you the staff report on this item. This is a phased project that started many years ago. This is really the second phase of the project. All the streets are existing for the spine streets. They're going to do some adjustments on some side streets, and with that introduction, Kathy will give you a full staff report.
Respected members of the commission, this is an application by World Development, and as stated, it's an amendment to an existing PD. The common name is Canyon Heights. The location is on the west side of the intersection of Murray Canyon. This shows a little bit. And South Palm Canyon Drive. It's a gated community that sits over here west of South Palm Canyon, and you can see the foothills of the adjacent mountains encroaching. The track map associated with this consists of three lots. These two are the developed portion. This is the proposed development, Lot Number 3. This is the proposed development, Lot Number Three. Why we're going, or even questioning, the need to amend the PD has to do with slight modifications to the architectural design, which consequently requires slight modifications to the existing pads. The basic configuration is still there. A person can see, actually, here, from an aerial perspective, the grading of those previous pads when the first 50 units were built. The over, I should kind of go back and say, the overall entitlement was for 93 units, and 50 have been constructed. So, there's, consequently, there's 43 units left to be developed. Adjacent to this property, to give you a little bit of a location perspective, you can see there's a tremendous amount of vacant property. On the north, it's an O-20, open space, 20 acre minimum. On the west, it's a wash with an R1A designation, which represents a single-family residential. That similar designation is here on the south. And if we go over east, we're going to have an R3 and an R2 adjacent to the property. The R3 represents the multiple family and also resort hotel designation, and R2 is a multifamily designation. Existing on the, on the east is a condominium project and golf course on the south. With that, I wanted to address a little bit of the density and the zoning implication with this. Because it's a PD, we're calling it the zoning from, in consistence with the previously passed PD. That was in 1977. But since that time, in 1994, council has approved the Canyon Park Resort and Spa Resort Specific Plan Number One, which included this area also, and gave it the entitlement for the 93 units also. So consequently, if we take the acreage that is included in Lot Number Three, we're going to end up with four units to an acre. But when we actually look at what's buildable, we'll see that, hard to estimate, but just bird's eye view, perhaps, a third is foothill and not developable. And consequently, will be a conservation area. It won't be developed. The Phase One of this project, as I said, built out the existing 50. Of the 43 units that are left, there's several designs, and I think this is an excellent graphic portrayal of what they're proposing. There's a 2,146 square foot Unit As. Some are singles, some are duplex type units or doubles. We have the next 2,000, B, 2,234 square feet. See these blue? Now, to C, 2,343 square feet, we're getting a little bit bigger. And then D, 2,657 square feet. And I want to point out that these are the only units that are two-story, or have a two-story element. So consequently, I wanted to show you here with the elevations and give you the idea of that particular unit, and how it might impact a view corridor. Staff feels that the developer has done a good job in positioning the units to allow four view corridors, et cetera, from existing built structures. This has gone before the homeowners association at Canyon Heights and has their full agreement. And I have a written letter to that fact, that they support this project fully. The basic site coverage, as I indicated, it leaves a lot of open space, or 65.6% open Oh, I want to point out one thing that I think is a wonderful amenity to this particular project, and that is that there's a very significant outcropping here. You can just barely see it. This would be a picture taken kind of back here, but you can see this dark rock here. And the developer had an original proposal that didn't really do too much with that. And after a site visit, staff suggested that they take a look at their recreational amenity area here, and try and modify that a little bit to incorporate this beautiful rock outcropping. And they've done an excellent job of that. They've moved the pool, and this is kind of a perspective from back, looking down. And then the facilities that would be associated with this restroom, et cetera, are basically hidden by the rock. And the Design Review Committee looked at this Monday and suggested that they modify the roof line. So that is something that, so it won't be quite so obvious. But we were very pleased to see that, and felt that they were looking at staff's recommendations and moving forward to try and create a very environmentally friendly design. Lastly, I wanted to comment on Design Review's original comment that we talked about fencing. It's an important aspect of their project, but it also has some environmental constraints. The Design Review Committee wanted to see a six-foot wrought iron fence around the project. And again, after a site visit, staff is recommending that we preclude the wrought iron fence to, and not include this north and northwest portion. Because of the mountain impact there, it didn't seem that it would be necessary for security reasons by any means. And staff felt that that would be a better design. But we did want to make sure in protecting bighorn sheep that there would be the ability to have a fence at a later time. So, as a condition of approval, staff has requested that the applicant include in their CCNRs a statement to that effect, that if there was deemed a need determined by planning staff and council, that they, that we would require fencing, and we might require a height increase on the other fence. And with that, I think I'm going to conclude my presentation and address any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions from the commission before we open the public hearing? Mr. Hockenadl?
The setback on the two-story units is from South Palm Canyon. That's probably 100 feet.
It's more than that.
It's more.
More than 100.
It's, yes.
Because this set way back...
Several hundred feet.
It's, I don't know, let's see down here on the track map if we can see 283 plus the street width here. So, it's quite significant from that, from that perspective.
So, you basically lose the height with the depth with your setback? You wouldn't really read real tall at the street line?
No.
Right at it?
No.
Be buried back in the project?
Yeah. And the existing project has some stepped units, two-story units. So, it's really in character with what's existing, and really when you go through the site, except from the parking areas because of the topography, you really don't get a feel that there's outright two-story units. Madam Chair, could I add one item to the motion's agenda?
Yes.
Just for clarification, because I know the applicant agreed to do it, but basically modification of the roof line of the pool, or restroom facility at the pool. And basically, Design Review wanted them to take the tile roof off of it and just make it as small and obscure as possible, back behind that rock. And the applicant was comfortable with that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Grinze?
Well, Doug said what I was just going to say, so we've got that. This went through Design Review smoothly. Very little, probably the only discussion was just that with the roof line. I could see it either way, but, you know, the applicant agreed they could minimize it, so I'm for it.
Any other questions? I have one, only because it is an existing project. Where will the construction entrance be?
I honestly don't know. The developer is here, so perhaps. Mr. Richard, could you answer that question?
All right, well, let's, we'll wait now, and we're, I'll open the public hearing. This is a public hearing item. Anybody wanting to speak on this item, please come forward. When you're finished speaking, please be sure your name and address is written on Anybody want to speak?
My name is Jim Carpenter. I live at Canyon Heights, and I'd like to have this fencing gone over again, because I couldn't follow that. I had been told there would be no fence. From what the lady said, it sounds as though there is going to be some fencing.
Anybody else wishing to speak on this item? See, see, well, somebody will answer your concerns...
Okay, fine, I'll sit down, thank you.
...but after the public hearing is closed. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, we'll close the public hearing and back to commission. Marks, do you have an answer to that, to Mr. Carpenter's concern?
I think he wanted clarification on the fencing issue.
Yes.
Okay, the Design Review recommended originally that there would be a six-foot wrought iron fence around the entire development. Staff, after an onsite visit, looked at that north and north-northwest corner, it's actually probably half of the perimeter of the development. It's very steep, and did not seem to facilitate the need for a fence in that location. Certainly not for security reasons. It would take a very arduous climb to get up and over and down. But to, because we're conscientious of the environmental concern for bighorn sheep, we wanted to definitely have the possibility that the fence could be built at a later date, and in fact, could be increased in height to, for the safety of the residents and the sheep, if they started to come into the area at all. This has been a standard condition that we've used on other projects. Mr. Evans could say specifically which ones. And we've done that. And that would come about by a determination of not only the planning director, but probably, but state fish and wildlife, et cetera. There would be a consensus of agreement for that. Does that answer your question, sir?
No, that doesn't address my question at all. You're talking about...
Could you come forward to the microphone, sir? I'll let you come forward again, but...
Originally, you said that surrounding the entire Lot Three, there would be a six-foot high fence, as I understand it. Now, you've, after an onsite inspection, you're saying the northern and some of the western edges of Lot Three would not require a fence. However, you're saying, as I understand it, that you're having them write into the CCNRs that at some point in the future, if you decided you wanted a fence in that area, it would have to be installed. But you're saying nothing about fencing on the southern and the southwestern side of Lot Three. And I originally understood you to indicate that there would be a fence requirement by the city on the southern and southeastern portions of Lot Three. Is that correct?
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter.
I'm going to move the exhibit over here so you can see from there a little bit easier. The recommendation is to put a fence in along the channel on the south and the western, and tie it back into the mountain, so that from the outside, it looks like it's a fenced project. And where it would tie into the mountain, if it's done correctly, would be back over here off of this unit. So from the outside, it looks like it's a fenced project. And what staff suggested, and it's commission's pleasure, it may be something the commission doesn't even care about, is that because the mountain is so steep back here and so beautiful, right down to the property line, that we felt that there really may not be a need to put the fence in around here, because this area is pretty rugged. Not to say that a good climber and hiker can't get in that area. In all likelihood, it'd be somebody that just got lost on the trail, and they're trying to get down to flat ground as fast as they can, which sometimes occurs. Then what we've said is, if bighorn sheep actually come onsite, which they traditionally don't do in Palm Springs and the San Jacinto Mountains, but as we all know, they do all the time in Rancho Mirage and the Santa Rosa Mountains, if and when, that became a problem. And nobody wants an animal that big and an endangered species in your yard. They're dangerous. It causes another regulatory problem. We're saying if that becomes a problem, the homeowners association would then have to put in a sheep fence. And if it became a problem, that they're going over a six-foot high fence, which we don't think they will, but they can, they can probably go over a 10-foot fence if they want to, that that fence might have to be eight feet. And that's consistent with what we've done with bighorn sheep fencing. This Palm Springs position is, until the sheep become a nuisance, we're not going to put in eight-foot fences and cage everybody in or out, but we will if it becomes a problem.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Thank you very much. That clarifies it. So, it is a condition of approval of this project that they build that six-foot fence, as you described?
Yes, sir.
That creates a concern on my part.
Mr. Carpenter, we already closed the public hearing portion of this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I was, my objection, my objection, once I understood the fence, was related to the fence. And I never got a chance to express that, because nobody could explain the fence until Mr. Evans did. But we need access through that fence somehow, so that we can enjoy the hiking in the mountains behind.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Back to commission for comments. Mr. Matthews?
Yeah, I think we might as well invite the developer up to deal with, you'd had a construction access issue, and I agree, that's a great access to a nice trail, and, you know, they may want to address pedestrian access to the trail.
Hello, Commission. My name is Gary Richard, and I represent World Development, 44600 Village Court in Palm Desert, California, 92260. The question was addressed to me specifically about construction access. We've had some correspondence with Riverside County Flood Control District to reenact a previously existing haul road, which accessed the property from the flood control channel side. There is a levee that separates the southern portion of the project from the channel, and there's a haul road just inside that levee. And so, that's our inclination and direction, is to reenact a previously existing haul road to access from outside the project for all work interior.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Richard.
Do you want to address the pedestrian access through the fence, perhaps?
Well, the fence was a condition of the city, and I would like to defer that to Mr. Evans, because that was one of the conditions, as I understood, there wouldn't be pedestrian access through there. access through there.
Does the city care whether there's pedestrian access through the fence?
Mr. Evans, do you want to comment on that?
To clarify the issue on the fence, the developer proposed a wrought-iron fence around the entire face. And what we've done is we've said, let's scale that back to just that area where the public might see a need to come in. I just spoke to the gentleman that had the concern about the fence, and he has a simple request, and I think it's a very good one. I also think it's a great marketing opportunity for the developer, and that is at the southwest area of that fence, at a place where it makes the most sense, to put a little trail that connects to the roadway, and then have a locked gate for the homeowners to go out the back door and hike the light and trail. You know, and I think that that could be done, I mean, real easily, and I think they can probably work that out, if you want to just put a condition in there, that on that proposed wrought-iron fence, that they put a gate and work with the homeowners on the location of it. There's a couple of places where it's just too tight with units, so they're going to have to kind of finesse exactly where it would be. It might be best to almost put it off the pool. So you go through the, you know, to the pool area, and then come around the backside and around, and that way, the public wouldn't even see the gate.
Madam Chairman. Thank you. Ms. Conrad?
I guess I just have one question. Why are the heights of these buildings 19 feet, 20 feet, and 27 feet, instead of 18 feet and 24 feet, for a typical one and two-story? Is it something to do about the grating or the pad heights, or what's, why are they
You're correct. There, the two-story element is 27. These are the elevations of the two-story element. I have one, I'm sorry, I didn't put all of the elevations that would include the two. I have the Manzanita, and that's at 19. This is a PD, so consequently, there's, and which I think the developer was trying to blend the architecture with the existing style, but also to create a certain newness to it. It was very well received in design review. It was unequivocally approved with, and applauded. They just did not have a comment in regards to, to height, massing, or scale. So I don't have a real good answer for you in regards to why, why there would be a change, but with the PD, there can be variations to the standards, I believe.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Could I add to that? What they've tried to do is, is take a look at the existing architecture and roof profiles. The original project was designed by Paul Thorick. Mr. Thorick liked very steep tile roofs, and if you flatten this out to a traditional Mediterranean or other type of style, you would probably fall into the 24-foot range, because his architecture, and you can see it all over where he's worked, it's got steep tile roofs. They took the exact same pitches on the existing project, brought it to the new, and that's why they pushed the 27.
Did they take the same plate heights?
I don't know if the plate heights are the same.
Maybe the developer wants to address that.
Current market trends are that plate heights are at nine feet, and so that's what we adopted in this project, to meet current market trends. I believe the original project was at eight feet, to answer that question specifically. So that does affect the overall heights. One other comment, can I make another comment regarding that? Specifically, on the D-units on the southeast section of the project, the major ridge lines were oriented north and south, so as to be less obstructive to the canyon views to the south, as opposed to having them oriented east-west, which would make the most impact, visual impact, to the south Palm Canyon view. So we did take that into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Richard. Any other comments from the commission? We have ready for a motion?
Yeah, all right, I'll get this thing done. Madam Chairman, I'd move approval of case 5.0958-PD-78, with the change that, subject to the conditions in the staff report, with the change in the ref's room roof line. I just want to comment, I really applaud the staff's fencing suggestion. I think that it's a much better plan that way, and we can also add the condition for the developer to work with the homeowners to put in a pedestrian access gate.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Matthews and seconded by Mr. Hockenadl. Any further comment? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hockenadl?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Ms. Conrad?
No.
Mr. Grinch?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Morantz?
Aye.
The, it passed six? No, it was five yeas, one nay, and one abstention. Somebody like to go find Mr. Schoenberger? In the meantime, Mr. Evans, do you want to go back to item number four, or go on to item number six?
If I'm not mistaken, in the audience, we have a, one person on item six, or at least one on item six, so if you could take that one. I'm not seeing anybody in the audience on item four yet.
We'll take up item six, case 5.0953, application for a text amendment to amend the Palm Springs zoning ordinance in regard to section 93.20.04, prohibited signs, section 93.20.09, permitted signs downtown, uptown, and section 93.20.10, signs, general provisions to allow creative live theater signs in the historic Central Business District zone and city-owned historic properties, and to allow outdoor display of limited merchandise in the Uptown C1 Retail Business Zoning District and CBD Central Business District zones. This matter was continued from the June 25, 2004 meeting, June 25, 2003 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I have to abstain, I have a business interest in the Uptown Business District.
Mr. Grinch will abstain from the matter and be excused. Do we have a staff report on that item?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we've given you a couple of staff reports on this one, and what we would suggest that you do is, staff is going to withdraw in its entirety, the section of the proposed ordinance dealing with signs, prohibited signs uptown, or excuse me, prohibited signs, as well as the signs in the uptown and downtown area, and general provisions. When and if that becomes an issue again, we will reschedule it as a separate hearing item. And with that, I'll have Larry give you a quick overview of, basically a summary of the study session and the changes to the legislative draft regarding the outdoor display of limited merchandise.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission? This doesn't seem to work. It's okay. At your July 2 study session, this item was presented, a couple of items were added to the legislative draft. In summary, the planning commission felt it would be appropriate to add fine apparel to the legislative draft, and staff had included some language to specifically limit the mannequins that would be used for those clothing to torso-type displays. And there was an applicant, excuse me, there was a business owner in the audience at that time, that presented some pamphlets and brochures on some typical structures, and it appeared to be in agreement with, with the majority of the commission. Just to summarize, there are some limitations on where this could occur in the uptown area. We provided some language in the ordinance restricting 32 square feet in the predominant C, Central Business District with three items, and then on the lower portion between 300 and 400 block of, I was going to say North Palm Canyon, that's correct, isn't it? There would be a 16-square-foot, one-item limitation. That's due to mostly physical parameters in that area. That's a brief, very brief summary of staff's report. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. It looks like there is also a business owner in the audience that would like to speak.
Any questions from the commission, comments? Is there anyone here who wishes to address the commission on this particular matter? Just a question I have, the, regarding the number of items that can be displayed, and maybe I didn't read this as thoroughly as I, as I should have, it, do I understand that, that there can only be one item displayed, or are you saying that there are certain areas where more than one item can be displayed, and other areas where it's restricted to one item?
We've, we've separated out, I have a, can hand this exhibit out, and it shows in red, the areas where you'd be limited to three items, 32 square feet, and the areas where you'd be limited to one item, 16 square feet. Simplify, it's within that small block, 300 to 400 block of North Palm Canyon, which you'd restrict, restricted to one item within a 16. I'll go ahead and pass this.
So that, do I understand that then it would be permitted for somebody to put three mannequins out with three shirts on them, or items of clothing in, in some areas, and in this restricted area, they could only put one out?
Correct. And that would be processed through a minor architecture application, so we would look at it and determine if in fact it would qualify for the three items, yeah.
And do I also understand, I see in the staff report, it says that, and I, and I bring this up, because I've had reservations about outdoor display items, and, and it's always been a concern to me, that it be done on a very limited and tasteful basis, and recognizing the, the opportunity or the likelihood or the possibility of abuse of this. But it says that in the event enforcement within allowable areas, or in other areas becomes a problem, staff will notify business owners, write correction notices or violation notices. If program becomes unmanageable, the subject ordinance amendments may need to be modified or rescinded. Is staff comfortable that if we see abuses, that this modified ordinance, or these amendments can be rescinded?
Chair, most of that?
Well, if, if the ordinances aren't being followed, you know, first and foremost, we would take enforcement action through community preservation. If there were flagrant violations that continued, the commission, staff, or the city council could initiate revising this legislation, rescinding this legislation. But obviously, that's a, you know, a two-to-three-month process, once you say, please do it. We're going to have to work closely with Uptown, with regards to the vendors in that area. That's probably an area that I'm concerned, that, you know, we're likely to have products right out on the curb. In the 300 to 400 block, I think we'll have a, an educational period, but I think most of those gallery owners will understand that they've been given a real privilege, and the sidewalk is pretty tight, so I think there's going to be less inclination to kind of push it there. And obviously, if somebody one block away sees something outdoor, they're going to assume that they can do it. So we're going to have an educational process in the areas outside of these districts. So it's going to take a little bit of labor, but I think in, in looking at the options, and really the benefits, particularly, I think, in the uptown, the staff, downtown, development director, Main Street, and the uptown association feel it's worth the risk.
Were there any of the downtown associations that, that did not favor these amendments?
Main Street was probably more tentative than Uptown, but they felt as long as it was in the blocks that are mentioned, the 300 to 400 block, they could live with it. They do not want outdoor display south of the 300 block, which is basically, you know, almost up into the uptown area.
And I just was reminded I failed to close the public hearing, so we will close the public hearing, and go back now to staff, and, I mean, to the commission with any other questions or comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move approval of case number 5.0953, application for a text amendment to amend the Palm Springs zoning ordinance with exclusion of the amendment to allow creative theater signs.
I'll second that.
All right, we've had a motion by Ms. Conrad, and a second by Ms. Morantz. Any further comments?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to comment that the director of planning provided me with a tape of the previous public hearing, which I viewed Sunday, so I can vote on this matter.
Okay.
Mr. Hockenadl?
Yes, we discussed before about, that would have just fine apparel, you know, so we don't want to get into...
T-shirts and...
So that will be written in?
Okay, yeah, that's part of the language.
Thank you.
Any other comments? We'll call question, all those in favor. We got, we got a public hearing, so we need to have a roll call vote, thank you.
Mr. Hockenadl?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Ms. Conrad?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Morantz?
Aye.
Chairman Schoenberger?
Aye. The matter, the, the item passes unanimously, 6-0, with one abstention. We, at this time, we'll go back to item number four. Case 5.0951, application by the City of Palm Springs to amend city zoning code, chapter 94.00, section 94.05, non-conforming uses and structure ordinance, to provide a relief mechanism for multifamily residential uses affected by the 1973 and 1995 downzoning, which was ordinance numbers 951 and 1513. Do we have a staff report on that item?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. This, this ordinance, very simply put, is an inclusion of a mechanism to provide relief for specific apartments that were downzoned in 1973 and 1993. That's part of a specific ordinance number, I was already read into the record. Essentially, what this does is provides a conditional use permit process to allow those non-conforming uses to be permitted under certain restrictions or criteria. So there's a small test that needs to be done, and an application presented before the planning commission. This, this type of relief will allow those non-conforming uses to remain indefinitely, and under the current ordinance, that would not be possible. There basically, the planning commission would, under certain findings, put a time limit on that use, and then provide when that use would have to be abated, removed, demolished, I guess. So working with a few of the property owners out there, and the city attorney, staff has drafted an ordinance that will, should, should meet that, that, that test. drafted an ordinance that will, should meet that test. That's a real quick summary, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the commission at this point, before we open the public hearing? This is a public hearing item. Anybody wishing to speak on this item, please come forward and give us your name and address, and be sure to sign the clipboard before you leave. Anybody here wishing to address the commission on this item? Seeing none, we'll go back to the commission for, we'll close the public hearing and go back to the commission for any questions, further questions or comments. Just as a matter of a quick comment, we've had this issue come before the commission for our new commission members on a couple of previous occasions. This really arose out of a situation that developed in a couple of areas where there had been downzoning, and there were some people who bought property in the area, improved the property, and were faced with a deadline arising out of the downzoning ordinance that would have potentially required those structures to either have been fully rebuilt and redesigned or possibly torn down. And the structures had been improved and rehabilitated to the point where they were useful structures, and the feeling was, and the impetus for this particular agenda item was to provide some relief for those property owners, but also to provide additional needed housing in some of these areas, that the feeling was that the situation had changed since the original downzoning ordinance had been passed, and that a way, we ought to find a way to try and save the properties that had been improved, and find a way to mitigate the effect of that downzoning ordinance where it appeared that it was a good idea to do so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Grinch.
I'd like to make a motion, in the case number 5.0951, text amendment, application to amend the city zoning code, chapter 94.00, section 94.05, make a motion to approve the text amendment.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Grinch, a second by Mr. Matthews. This is a public hearing item, so we'll need to have a roll call vote.
Mr. Hockenadl?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Ms. Conrad?
Aye.
Mr. Grinch?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Morantz?
Aye.
Mr. Schonberger?
Aye. That, I think, concludes all our public hearing items, leaving one other item on the agenda, item number eight, case 10.444, request for planning commission determination that new boat sales are similar to automobile sales agencies permitted by right-of-zone and general commercial C2, commercial manufacturing CM, planning research and development park M1P, and M1 zones. I have a conflict on that matter.
I do too.
My office represents an interested party in that. Ms. Morantz informs me that she also has a conflict on that matter.
I have a conflict, my husband and son's business just recently did some work there at that building, so I will have to abstain on that item.
So with that, we'll ask Mr. Matthews to handle that matter, and Ms. Morantz, and I will excuse ourselves.
I have to abstain also, I have a business within 500 feet of that property.
Okay.
Mr. Hockenadl also is still leaving us with a quorum?
Yep, we're good, we have four.
We're still good? All right. So we'll repair to the outer hallway, and Mr. Matthews will handle the matter.
Don't be long. Staff report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. The request before is a planning commission determination, there's a provision in the zoning ordinance where the planning commission can take a look at uses that are not specifically listed in the zoning code, there's no way we could predict every use imaginable, and take a look at existing uses that are allowable by right-of-zone, and if you determine that there's a similar use, in this case, the question is, the zoning code currently allows automobile sales in the C2, CM, M1, and M1P zones. We had an inquiry as to whether or not the commission would consider boat sales a similar type land use, in staff's opinion, it is, and we'd recommend that the commission make a determination that new boat sales are consistent with automobile sales in the zones I already mentioned, and that completes our report.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any questions from the commission or motions?
Mr. Chairman? I move that we approve case number 10.44 as presented.
Okay, thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Thank you. Let's get the rest of the commission back. I'm looking for a sailboat, for the record.
I'm sorry, now I have to abstain.
No, I just am looking for a sailboat.
Moving right along. It looks like we have completed all items on the agenda, we're down to number nine, the commission work program. Mr. Evans, anything to report on the commission work program?
No, sir.
And the general plan process is proceeding apace, I assume?
We have started our involvement with the steering committee. We have our first subcommittee assigned, it's three members that are going to take a look at the draft housing element. We're coordinating a meeting with them, and we've given assignments to the steering committee, and we are going to meet at least monthly for a while.
City council, city council actions?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, the city council this evening will consider the plans and specifications for the visitor's center as an item that you just looked at in your agenda. They will also discuss the valley-wide animal campus, that's something that SEVAG and a number of cities in the county are working on, and it's really a debate as to whether or not we'll keep our animal shelter or participate in a regional facility. The council will also discuss in study session the Quimby Act ordinance, summer parking schedule in the downtown, and then they'll have a lively debate on the future study session docket or agendizing things for council study sessions. That completes the council activity for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Commission staff reports and requests. Ms. Morantz?
Not to beg the question, however, as was approved in the minutes of the May 28 meeting, when I brought up several items regarding the Sun Center, and I know that they are not 15 acres in size, and they have more than one name on their monument sign. And I had discussed that back yonder, and the sign's still there.
But the couch is gone.
That's correct.
Any other, any other commission reports? Seeing none, Mr. Evans?
Yeah, a couple of items, we, with pleasure, handed out your summer reading material. We provided the commission with copies of the Palm Hills specific plan draft EIR. That document, particularly volume one, is the overall summary and evaluation and mitigation program for the project. Volumes two through four are the technical reports, ranging from biology to traffic to air noise, all kinds of things that we analyzed. What we're going to plan to do is, the next document you will get, which is not quite as thick as volume one, will be the actual specific plan, which is the fundamental document that you would be considering in the project. And then what we'll do at your first meeting in August, your study session, is we'll give you an update on the overall project. We'll talk to you about some opportunities for field trips. Now that the weather's just about perfect, it's time to go up on the mountain. But we've got a fair amount of work to do on the project, and as we indicated in the transmittal, we would think the commission would be taking action on this in September, depending on the amount of public comments, maybe October, and then city council sometime about 30 days thereafter. And we suspect there'll be a bit of controversy, I'd encourage you to read as much as you can regarding bighorn sheep, because that's going to be one of the key issues. The other one you might want to do is take the visual impact section and do a little driving about town and take a look at it. We'll get some full-size exhibits on some of those visual impact exhibits, so you can take a look at them in your meetings, see things a little bit better. But it's probably the most comprehensive environmental document we put together, and it's also one that's probably going to be the most controversial.
Anything else, Mr. Evans?
That's it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Ms. Morantz?
Mr. Evans, I will not be at that first study session in August, and Mr. Schonberger has a conflict. Do we want to find out who all, will we have enough?
We're on the sixth either.
Whatever that first Wednesday in August.
That would still leave four. Any other conflicts on that matter?
One, two, three, four. Okay.
Okay, I think we'd still have a quorum, Mr. Matthews can chair that meeting, and...
But the public meeting on that item will be the following week, is that correct?
Yes. We'll have a public hearing on that week. If, we'll do is, we'll take a look and talk to the applicant, we may not talk to you about this on the study session on the fourth week. We're going to try to keep the commission intact on this one, so we don't have to repeat.
Okay, but the public hearing item, I'll be there.
Anything further? If not, again, I want to welcome our two new members, Mr. Hockenadl and Ricky Wright, and you both performed admirably at your first commission meeting, and congratulations, and we're happy to have you, we'll look forward to seeing you at our next meeting.
If you need a hand with us, Larry and I are here to help.